Microphone would be better than me trying to yell at the internet. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular business meeting for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 PM. Can I ask that our clerk, Simonson, please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present in establishing a quorum. Vulture, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker, will you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you. Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is public comments. This is a limited public forum for people to speak to the city council during this council meeting. Topics are limited to items on tonight's agenda and to topics specific to city laws, budget, and operations under the council's authority. Comments that are outside the scope of, this limited scope, will not be allowed. Comments that do not follow the council's rules of procedure will not be allowed. Person to the council rules of procedure is amended by the council on December 12th, 2023. Oral comment is limited to in-person comment only for all city public meetings, including city council and city boards and commissions until further notice. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Spoken comments that are not within the scope or time limit of this limited public forum can be sent in writing. Information on where to send written comments and to view the rules of procedure is on tonight's agenda and on the screen. We'll now begin the public comments. We'll go ahead and invite up first Susan Davis. And when you begin your comment, please state your name, your area of residence, or your association with the city, and then we'll start the timer. Good evening. Okay, so we'll do three minutes for you, Susan, then we'll go ahead and we'll introduce you in three minutes for you. Thank you. Susan, you're on a great roll, and we're going to pause the timer. We need to turn on your microphone. Sorry about that.
Okay.
So we'll wait to start the timer. You go ahead and begin speaking, and we'll just restart the timer in about 10 seconds.
Should I start over, or?
No, just keep going.
Okay. Sorry about that.
We heard you, and the audio probably picked it up just fine, but this will improve things. Thank you.
Okay. So, back to my, back to my statement here. On that first page, we've got those actual numbers associated with the buildable lands report, what the county is projecting, and then what I believe is realistic. To bring that forward, we did, we would like to get the city council's recommendation to put this project forward, and I've outlined, you know, several things where I think would be beneficial for you to know about the property. We're very happy to walk the property with you, share the information in person, but essentially, our property is in the passive development, and we're surrounded by the city boundary, or by the city on three sides of us already, and we have a 60% common boundary. We've got all the utilities at the site, all of the roads are there at the site, all city maintained. In fact, the city also maintains the utility quarter that goes through our property. That area could certainly be used for the public's use. People do like to walk through there, we found, and it would actually provide a great trail connection from Chain Lake Trail through the property over to the North Hill Park that's already, you know, been purchased by the city.
Okay, and I'll need to have you stop there. Thank you very much. And Lonnie, if you could go ahead and please state your name and association with the city or area of residence, and then we'll start the timer.
Lonnie Davis, and I live with Sue outside the city.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And I timed this in three minutes and two seconds, so I just had to, now it's too many. Anyway, okay, we are here tonight to ask the city council to endorse our Montu UGA expansion proposal because county planning policies specifically state any UGA expansion should have the support of affected cities. Sue has explained in detail how the amount of buildable land is overestimated in Monroe's UGA. Puget Sound Regional Council routinely mentions good planning and efficient land use. If land is a limited resource, the land on the city boundary should be seen in the same light. Currently, we are zoned for building three additional homes on our 22 acres. All would be on septic. Imagine if this property had 70 to 100 homes with mixed density, single-family, duplex, townhomes, fourplex. Imagine if the existing Chain Lake Trail were continued and went out to Chain Lake Elementary. Currently, nearly all the students are bused and are dropped off by parents. Development of the Montu site will extend the trail 250 yards, leaving roughly 600 yards remaining to reach the school. There is funding available, and we are willing to facilitate cooperation amongst the city, county, and school. We have reached out to representatives and are encouraged by the feedback so far. The city's pros plan directly states the number one most requested priority from the citizen's survey is building more trails and paths. Imagine empowering students and parents to be able to walk or bike to school safely. Other reasons this makes sense. All roads to access our property are already in place and serviced by the city of Monroe. All utilities are available and accessible. This city's six-year transportation plan already includes widening Chain Lake Road. The fire department is relocating its fire station 32 closer to Chain Lake Road to better serve the citizens. The PUD upgraded the electrical grid by putting in a new switching station on To Journey, To Journey Place. I do want to mess that up. The city purchased North Hill Park land that is one-quarter mile away from our property. They are just awaiting funding for the build-out. Our property is no longer rural. We are surrounded by the city on three sides with 60% common boundary lines. We have 27 homes along our southern border, as well as small lot development on our other borders. We ask that you be bold. Endorse our Montu proposal. It is efficient land use, and will provide needed housing and an opportunity to complete the Chain Lake Trail to the elementary school. We already paid to have the draft EIS, environmental impact statement, completed on our property. If Montu is supported by the city and approved by the county, 100% of the ownership is agreeable to annexing into the city, which means it will be developed under the city of Monroe development plans, not the county. We would encourage development that incorporates higher-intensity, mixed-density housing. The bottom line, the state is in a housing crisis, and the only way out of it is to increase the supply of housing. The best way to do this is to increase availability of vacant large parcels of land in the path of current growth. The Montu docket proposal can also contribute to Monroe Parks and Trail System by extending the current Chain Lake Trail to the elementary school, which would make kids safer and be an asset to the community.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak this evening? Councilmember Representative Loeb?
Well, good evening. Councilmember Sam Loe, District 5. And I didn't plan on getting served the same papers you got served tonight, so I got them too, and so I have to file those with our clerk, but I'm not here to give any undue pressure. I just wanted to come tonight and listen to your discussion about the proposals in front of you. I probably should be guarded in what I say because this is going to be in front of the county council, too, but I just want to swing by and say hello and not pressure either way. I just want to hear, be here and listen tonight. So good to see you guys, and a lot of you keeping in contact, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, anybody else out there that would like to speak this evening? All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item would be announcements and presentations. With the council's indulgence, I do want to take a moment to just sort of add one item in announcements and presentations. It's for a proclamation for Administrative Professionals Day. Is there any objection to me mentioning this at this time instead of during mayor's report? All right. So I'm not going to read the resolution entirely, but every year, August 24th, is Administrative Professionals Day. The work that we do here can't be done without all of our staff. That includes our administrative professionals. And so to our administrative professionals, I just thank you for all the work you do to keep us running. I thank you especially in that the work that you do is often behind the scenes, and it really supports a lot of the external stuff that we do. So we'll just go ahead and ask that our directors share my gratitude and thankfulness for the work that they do, and I think that's all. So thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. All right, next item on the agenda then is the Snohomish County Conference of Plan Update with our Planning Manager, Jirillo. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Do you have my presentation queued up? While that's working, while Sherry is pulling my slides up, I did want to just walk you through what's in your agenda bill. There's also links in here, a lot of additional information. This evening, after we have our conversation, we are looking for some guidance as to, do you want us to submit a letter to the county? The county's process, the county council does not have to hold a public hearing. The planning commission has already held a public hearing. There are briefings occurring currently. There was one on April 2nd, April 16th. There's one on April 30th and May 7th. So there's some opportunity if you do want to direct staff to prepare comments on, in Monroe's, on Monroe's behalf. The items in the agenda bill just kind of walk you through the alternatives. They also have done an environmental impact statement for ours. We are not issuing our draft EIS until the middle of May, so they are literally two years ahead of us, so I just want to put that out there. And then, just again, in here, it talks about the opportunities for the city of Monroe to make formal comment. Staff has been providing comments throughout the process. During the draft elements, we provided some comments. We also provided comments during the environmental impact statement. Those letters are all included in your packet this evening. And then also, the April 2nd County Council Planning and Community Development Committee was given an overview, and that presentation is also in your packet this evening. Technology is awesome when it works.
Imagine a PowerPoint presentation. Imagine the words overview of Snohomish County Conference of Plan across the screen in white on a beautiful steel blue there.
Okay, next slide, thank you. So just a reminder, the county is also doing their 10-year update, which takes them out to 2020, 2044. It's the same as our process. Again, they are about two years ahead of us in doing their review. From the environmental review process, I want to highlight this because it has to do, it's very similar to what you have seen for Monroe, where we're looking at different land use scenarios to achieve our population housing and employment projections for 2044. The county has looked at three alternatives, a low-growth, which is their current comprehensive plan, same as ours, no growth. There's a moderate, yeah, a moderate growth, which includes, excuse me, it has an emphasis for majority of development to occur in the high-capacity transit communities, which are adjacent to the sound transits link-light rail system, and then community transits bus-rapid transit system. Cities and towns like the city of Monroe are given a smaller portion of that growth. And then the third alternative is a higher projection, and that includes all proposed docket items that people wanted to increase our urban growth area, not just ours, but any urban growth area. And then there were a handful of county council proposals to also increase the UGA, UGAs throughout Snohomish County, and so it's the big growth one. The draft EIS, which talked about the pros and cons from an environmental impact statement, was issued back on November, or excuse me, September 6th, and the 45-day review period ended. I just noticed in my slide here, I did not, I went to look at the number of comments they received. It was a lot. I was scrolling through them, but that number is not in there today. The next step is the final EIS, and the reason I wanted to bring this to your attention is that county staff, their consultant teams, they'll be responding to all the comments that they received during the draft. So there'll be more information for the county council, and that is very similar to what you all will be going through later this year. Next slide. Again, I've already gone over this, but again, the county's planning commission did make a formal rec, they held a public hearing and forwarded a recommendation last year. The city of Monroe did provide a comment letter for that public hearing. We generally are supporting alternative number two, which for us does not change our urban growth areas. We were agreeing with the initial population, employment, and housing allocations. There is concern about changes to the Maltby urban growth area. We also had some strong concerns about council motion 22099, which I'll show you in some slides later, but there was a large expansion to the city's UGA between Roosevelt Road and US 2. That letter, again, is in your packet this evening. And then the planning commission, the county's planning commission did recommend the preferred alternative number two, and then they had some additional specific fail or pass on some of these specific changes. Next slide. Okay, I'm so, gosh, I wish these slides showed up better. I'll keep that in mind. So the first one, 22090, was a council action. That is the top-left proposal, and it has a series of increases to, it's around the Mill Creek urban growth area, generally speaking. The next one is a council action 22-134. That is the top-middle map. Again, this is more in the southwest UGA, but going towards the Maltby area. Council action 22-098 is Maltby. That's the top-right corner. Council action 22-099, this is the one I just referenced, is between, it's for the city of Monroe's urban growth boundary between Roosevelt Road and US 2. The Monroe 2, which the Davises talked about this evening during public comment, is the middle-bottom, and then Maltby 1 is the bottom-right, and that was a fairly substantial recommended increase to the Maltby area. Next slide. So the way their process works, and I think I got it right, I was talking to their staff earlier today, is that the planning commission's recommendation, it gets forward to the city council, or excuse me, county council, but it also goes to the executive. And so the executive reviewed it, and I would say generally concurred with their recommendations with some significant changes, with a few of the proposed urban growth area expansions. He is not recommending the larger expansions to the Maltby urban growth area. And I did want to point out, if you feel like digging into information, if you go to the county council, or yeah, the county council's planning and community committee agenda for April 4th, the executive staff report or his comments are in here. It's kind of interesting to read. It's not just the UGA changes, but it also includes the proposed changes to each element. Am I talking too fast? No, okay.
I think you're doing fine.
All right.
Thank you, Kate.
Yeah. So, let's see here. Okay, next slide. Perfect, county council. So as I mentioned before, the county council has briefings. The way I understand it, it is a committee that is currently doing this, and it is an opportunity for the public to provide comment, written comment. Again, they've already held two of these meetings. The first one was on April 2nd, the second was April 16th. The new, the next two opportunities are April 30th and May 7th. The reason this is important is, again, the county council is not required to hold a public hearing, so if you want to provide comment and feedback, this might be your last opportunity. We can continue to submit written comments as well throughout this process, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Based on the county's timeline right now, they are anticipating adoption in September of 2024, and again, they have the same deadline that we do of December 31st, 2024. Next slide. And so we put some options together. I will recap this at the end of the slide deck, but if the council chooses not to provide comment, that is an option. If you provide, you want to provide comment in response to the Davises, that's an option. So I tried to give you some other things to consider. If you wanted us to refresh what we'd already provided, generally supporting Monroe and alternative two, that's another option. Next slide. Okay, so the specific proposed changes to the city of Monroe at this point in time are not recommended to move forward by either the county's planning commission or the executive, county executive, and that is both the Monroe 2, which is the Davis's application, and council motion 22099. Next slide. This is just a graphic to show you how these were included in the three alternatives that the county council is considering through their EIS process. Alternatives one and two do not make any changes to the Monroe urban growth area. There is a small change in the designation as you're headed out of Monroe to the east. I would consider it more of a correction than anything else. It's a very similar change from an agriculture designation. And then again, alternative three would change Monroe's urban growth area. Next slide, please.
Go ahead, just a second. Councilmember Scarborough?
I'm a little confused on what's going on, but I'll let you continue, but I would like at some point for kind of a clarification of option two in East Monroe. I don't understand what you're saying there.
Sure, sure. So the middle one, alternative two, it's not a change to our urban growth area, but is, it's a change in the county's designation, and so it's currently designation, designated rural, and they're looking to change that to Ag 10. So that's their own zoning, just like we have ours, so.
It's not East Monroe, that's a property that's on the south side of US 2.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's no change to our urban growth area that's already annexed.
Okay, as long as I understand it.
Yeah, that's a great question. Okay, next slide. So these are the Maltby proposals. Again, there are no proposed changes to alternative one, alternative two. Alternative three includes several changes. The tan color, though, that would change it from a rural designation to a residential. The magenta is, what was, magenta was rural business to planned community business, and purple is R5 to light industrial. Next slide, please. The other things that I thought would be of importance to the city council is that in each element or each chapter, just like ours, they have information on parks, recreation, transportation, natural, natural resources, shoreline. The items that I felt you would like to see is that the county does have identified roads and potential road improvements outside of Monroe. On the far-left example, it's the roads outlined in orange. One of them is Roosevelt Road, and then the two light-blue colors are also county, under county jurisdiction. The purple, again, is wash dot. The next slide in, so the second in from the left, I'm dyslexic, so hang in there with me, that identifies future trails, and that's also, so that's non-motorized pedestrian trails, and that's also, the next slide over, identified as trails. There are two maps illustrating future trails, and it's a connection of the Centennial and Snoqualmie, so that is still included in their draft comprehensive plan. Next slide. One error that I did find today, thanks to a conversation with Jaka, is the county has significantly increased our sewer boundary. Our current plan illustrates the sewer boundary in the southwest area to actually go beyond our urban growth area, which is not consistent with the Growth Management Act, so we'll be revising that this year. And the county's plan shows it going all the way down to the Snohomish River. So I will be providing that comment to the project manager, and I was advised that I also need to send a comment to the county council, which we will follow up on. Next slide. All right, so back to the conversation. Yeah, if you have questions for me, I will do my best to answer them. Again, we are looking for some direction this evening. If you are interested in provide, providing formal comment, my personal experience is that the legislative and executive bodies' weight is much more than city staff, so we are here to find out what you'd like to do.
Okay, so councilmembers, I would propose that maybe we kind of take things off the list up there, and we just find out if folks are okay. First, I think at a minimum, we need to address the errors relating to the city of Monroe infrastructure identified in the plan. Is there any objection to that? Okay. In terms of the Maltby UGA, so let's start out there, and then we'll work inward. Are there any concerns with our original comments, which was that we oppose any higher-density growth in the Maltby UGA? Our rationale has been that city growth belongs in cities. I would prefer that growth outside of city limits be on lower-density parcels so that cities can annex those territories rather than having the county subdivide those at detached residential, earn the value from real estate excise tax, sales, construction, et cetera, and then expect us to annex the territory. So my preference would be that the growth that would otherwise occur in Maltby be able to go to Snohomish and Woodinville and Monroe and the other cities. Is there a reversal in that direction from the council? All right, let's go ahead, then, if it's okay with the council, then focus on Monroe. So I'd like to go ahead, and if it's okay with you, just start off with the Roosevelt section. One of the things that I just want to share with the council is that if you rewind a couple of years ago, we talked to the council, and we talked to staff, and the staff talked to the county staff about wanting to grow the directions that we wanted to grow before. If you remember, we wanted to grow to the south and west, so ironically, going to the sewer plan. If we go to the, the error, the erroneous sewer plan map, you just.
Sorry, forward one more.
Yeah. Yeah, so ironically, that area that is generally in the sewer plan map on the left side of that screen is the area that we were talking about moving out our urban growth area. And if you remember correctly, we got pushback from county, from county staff about doing that because, because of the population, the PSRC, and that the county decided that we would end up accepting, and so we weren't able to expand our UGA that way. And in the meantime, as you're all aware, we're having problems with annexing the territory that we actually want to annex, or at least we've generally expressed a support in annexing, which is Roosevelt, which has already pretty much developed at detached residential, smaller lots, septic systems, and public water. So one of the frustrating things here is that we have two proposed urban growth areas. So, one of the frustrating things here is that we have two proposed urban growth area expansions where there are directions that we didn't really talk about as a city. We would have preferred to have been able to come in with something to the southwest along 522 rather than the Roosevelt side. Again, I'd like to talk about the Davis one separately, because I, I recognize that's a smaller parcel, and I think there's some more conversation there. So, as far as the Roosevelt one, we've been opposed to the Roosevelt one simply because it takes away, in our opinion, opportunity to grow the direction that we, as a city, want to grow, not be told to grow by, you know, by decisions at other levels. So, with all that said, does anybody take objection to our current stance, which is to oppose the Roosevelt urban growth area expansion?
Just for reference, that is Council Action 22-099, the property between Roosevelt Road and US 2.
So, is there, do you want to change course on that one? Okay, I'm not seeing any objection to staying the course on that one. All right, let's come to the, the Davis one, and for some reason, I keep wanting to call the Davises the Hanson's, so I'm sorry about that. I don't know why. There you go. But we'll go with Davis tonight, because that's the names. Okay. So, to the council, one of the things that we've talked about is that if something is going to be added to our urban growth area, I think it's important that there be an agreement that that territory is going to be kept at a lower density until it's annexed by the city. One of the things that we heard tonight was comment from the Davises, that they would want to annex into the city. They also expressed an interest in being at higher density, which would allow us to hopefully bring in more options for housing. So, I think that there are a couple of positives there. You've got a willing landowner that's willing to come into the city, that they're willing to annex into the city. If the council were to decide, were to decide to go a direction of supporting that coming into the city as part of the UGA, that we be clear that it is our expectation that it not be divided or developed until it is annexed with the city. And again, we have willing property owners at this point in time. And I would also recommend that the council also document the intent to consider higher density housing at that location. And we've talked a little bit about displacement, increasing higher density in downtown, which displaces people with, who have affordable housing today versus putting it on parcels that are already larger. So, those would be my two asks, that if the council decides to yes, support the Davis proposal, that we plainly state that it should be annexed into the city before further development occur, and that, that we will consider a higher density zoning for that property. So, those are my thoughts. And I encourage the council to discuss that one, and then if you've got any other questions, we can move into those topics. Council? Councilmember Foulter has reached for her flag, so right now she's winning. Councilmember Foulter, I'm going to call on you because you reached.
It's a race. Okay, good.
You were closer to the door.
Thank you.
That would be from Rat Race, so if you don't know what she was referring to, I recommend watching Rat Race.
I appreciated the presentation tonight during public comment. I'm not going to call it a presentation, it was a comment. It addressed any previous objections that I've had about supporting that area for annexation. So, personally, I am looking at the MON 2 proposal and saying, yeah, let's go for it.
Okay, thank you. Other councilmembers, or just a motion, just expressing support for the MON 2. Councilmember Beaumont?
Thank you. So, I was really interested in the public comment portion that talked about walking to school and creating a trail, which is something I really support, and that we're trying to create more connectivity trails, walking, biking. I love the idea of parents walking their kids to school and reducing the number of cars on the road, reducing the congestion of having. I've actually subbed at that school, and it's a nightmare up there, so I am in full support. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Council, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we've, we've talked about this. It's been a while, but several times, and to me, it only makes sense. We just purchased a park right nearby for all the reasons that have been described. It just makes total sense with the schools and everything else. So, I move to support the MON 2 proposal.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Gamble to support the MON 2 UGA expansion proposal. Any discussion on the motion? And I'm going to defer to Councilmember Hanford first, because I understand that since he made the motion, I should give the floor to him first, and then I'll go to the flags. Councilmember Hanford, anything further?
No, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Fisher, and then Councilmember Gamble.
So, yeah, also in support of MON 2, so public comment tonight. I wish the parcel was bigger, I guess, is the only thing I'm thinking of. It's 22 acres, and how it sits within the quarter, quarter mile of the park that we have up there now, and that is kind of one of our goals as a city, is have a park within a quarter mile of all the residents, plus all the infrastructure that this, that the city is already responsible for. I think it makes perfect sense, so.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Gamble? Clap twice. Or wiggle your nose, your choice.
Twist around. No, I, I'm in support, too. I think, I go to your comment about, you know, the others feel a little forced, and I mean, our organic growth is already occurring up, you know, Chain Lake, so it makes a lot of sense strategically that that's what we would, we want to grow as a city, because that's where it's going. I'd much rather those developments be coming in under city. And then, yeah, the trail would be fantastic. My kids went to that school as well, and it can be an absolute nightmare, so, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
As a fellow or a prior planning commissioner, when I was reading this, I went to the minutes or the agendas from the planning commission, Snohomish County Planning Commission, and just kind of read their decisions on all the items, and on this one, a point that concerned me or stuck with me was they emphasized the fact that there was no planned improvements to Chain Lake Road. And when it comes to transportation, there were a few ways that it didn't meet their criteria. They call them criterion, I guess, on there? Don't know what the difference is yet.
Singular versus plural, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Perfect. And in speaking with homeowners up there, I, I know that they're already really frustrated with congestion, and I, I haven't made up my mind entirely on, on this annexation, but at this point, I'm not ready to support it. And I would love to take the Davises up on the idea of touring it, because I think it'd be a good idea for, I guess, to, to see kind of the, the lay of the land and the, the relation and distance to the park. And so, I, I think in that regard, I'm, I'm probably going to vote, vote to abstain or vote, vote no, just for the time being. And yeah, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
I agree to some degree with Jake here. I, I support it. I like what you said. My concern is about our access to Highway 2 and getting out of town, and how much the traffic is building up on, on Chain Lake, and can we get people? Understand, we want to grow that way, I agree with that. Understand why you want to have that property annexed, and I agree with that. I want to know if we do that, what pressure we put on either ourselves, or the county, or the state to help us fix the arterials that get us out of town down the Highway 2 or into the main part of town. But also, I will support it here.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I think it's great to have these conversations, because I think we're all concerned, and we all moved to a small town, right? A lot of us did, or grew up here, and there's a reason why we're here, so we, you want to be responsible. I look at it, I mean, I'm the same, but I live off of Chain Lake, and I'll complain now to traffic. If you look at Peaks and Valleys, it's just during, you know, one particular time, and we are putting measures in place in order to help mitigate. I think the piece that is appealing to me on this is that when you're looking, we do need to have housing. It's that where, you know, I, I sat through a student of the month at the Rotary, listening to, to kids that are graduating, giving, you know, what they're going to do and plugging into community, and a lot of them are moving away. And they said in there, one of the reasons is, is they just don't see how they could, and affordable housing was actually brought up. So, that's one of the things I struggle with, because I do want to keep it, you know, and this is one of those areas where I think, hey, if we can build, and it's 22 acres, it's not, not, you know, the, the much larger ones that we're, you know, we're talking about, where we can, you know, add additional housing to help with, with that. I think that's the responsible way to do it, because we do need to grow. I mean, that's just, we're going to grow, and so if we're, if we're going to grow, how do you do it the right way, organically, in a responsible way? I think we've done a fairly good job so far. It's tough, because you, you do, you have to manage, you have to manage the other, because a lot of people moved here to be in a small town, but we've grown, and we're going to continue to grow. It's just how do you grow in a responsible way? I think this is right in line with that.
Councilmember Fisher, go ahead. Those buttons are really tricky. You got to like push and hold down. Kevin knows how to, how to work the microphones.
It's great. No, I just wanted to say how important it is for me also, and you had mentioned it, that this property is annexed into the city limits before it is developed, so we can realize that. And then also important to me is that housing mix that I didn't mention before. So, whether we come up with some kind of a way to do a ratio of 10 houses to one fourplex, or five houses, or 25 houses, whatever it may be, to just kind of mix that use and also get a little bit more density up there. That's all I had.
Thank you. Councilmember Foulter, I see your flag beginning to go up. Go ahead.
Sir, you did. Yes, that was actually quite a decisive point for me, was talking about the mixed kinds of housing, because I think that we do need fourplex, we do need threeplex, we do need duplex. We need, in order to get more affordable housing, they can't all be these single-family residences, which I own and love. However, that was, that was really a clincher for me, so I am agreeing with Councilmember Fisher on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough?
My question. We can shed all that.
Yes, sir.
My question is, when we talk about twoplex, fourplex, or threeplex, are we talking two-story, three-story? Are we talking a fourplex with four three-story buildings? Or are these fourplexes with one-story buildings, you know, one, two, three, four?
So, so Councilmember, I think that that's a level of detail that we would address when it comes time to consider annexing and maybe doing a pre-annexation zoning of the property.
It would be a concern to me.
Sure. All right, any other? Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead. Oh, I didn't see your flag.
I just wanted to, thank you. I just wanted to say that I, I think it's great that Councilmember Walker did that level of research and detail and considered past decisions on this property. I really admire him for really diving deep on this. I think it brought up some great points. One thing I did want to say is, just echoing the diversity of housing. I think we really need that, and that was also something that attracted me to this proposal. And I just think it's, it's, we've got to grow, as Councilmember Gamble was saying, you know, we've got it. This puts us in control, and I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we go to Councilmember Walker, one of the things that, that had us supporting at one point in time, that Southwest UGA expansion, was exactly what Councilmember Walker and other councilmembers have brought up, which is the impact on the north end of town. And there, there's just been a lot of growth on the north end of town, and the idea of being able to open up a different area that is, you know, along 522, you know, just a completely different area of town, allows that, that area where people have moved into to sort of take a break from more development on the north end of town. And so, I will not be serving as your mayor next time this comes up, but I would encourage those of you who are still serving on council, mayor, whatever the case is, to really take a look at that Southwest UGA. I think that a lot of the stuff we're talking about with mixed use, multifamily, yeah, attached product, also having the visibility from 522 and being able to have maybe some businesses that people pass by and might get off and come around and go to. I think there's a lot of opportunity there for the community to grow and develop another commercial, mixed-use, higher-density residential node in that area that unfortunately, we were not encouraged to proceed with trying to expand our UGA, too. So, yeah, to one of my complaints, when I go to the Maltby UGA and go to a couple of businesses there, I, I scratch my head and wonder, why here? Why not in Monroe? And why here? Why not in Snohomish, the city of Snohomish? Those are, those are my complaints. Those sorts of uses can go in Monroe if the PSRC and the county will just allow us to expand our UGA the direction that we, the people in Monroe, want to expand. Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
With the budget coming up in the fall, I'd like to propose new microphones.
So, we'll do a transfer to the, the school district, yeah?
Perfect, yes. Yes, exactly. I, I forgot to mention my first point, that I just want to express my gratitude to the Davises for all the work that they've put into this. The data is awesome, and I appreciate it, and I am all for the expansion of our, our UGA. I want to echo what you've said before, Mayor, about the idea that I'd rather it be in, in our control. And with, with this one, again, for me, it's just, there hasn't been enough, I guess, data that I've been able to review yet, because another part of the planning commission's decision was around access to utilities. And I haven't really heard yet. I've been meaning to, to speak with staff about the likelihood or the cost of utilities being extended out there. So, anyways, all, all this to say, I am not opposed to the idea of this, this property being annexed. I think it's an awesome opportunity. I would just love to hear whether or not we recommend this tonight, or don't. I, I would love to hear from staff on feasibility, I guess, of the development of that site, because though we could dream for it to be density and fourplexes, is it, is it ever going to happen that way? I guess is, is my concern, and if it's unlikely that it would happen that way, then that's where I would kind of make my decision. So, anyways, and then if, if I may, since I wasn't around for that Southwest question that, that you were talking about, and since it's going to be a part of maybe our, our comment to the council, can you explain very briefly how, how we were discouraged from growing in that direction? Because I think you make a, a great point about the way that the infrastructure down there is set up to handle growth.
We had staff, short, very high end. We had staff look into it. Council expressed an interest in it. It was going to cost a substantial amount of money for us to go through the process, and it was something that, at the end of the day, we had received comments from county staff, as I recall, that indicated that there would be an unwillingness to support moving forward with it. So, with all that said, just because of the, the population that was allocated to us by PSRC in the county, we, we did not see a pathway forward to be able to spend the money and actually get an outcome where we would expand that direction. So, that would be the short end of it. We have a motion on the floor. And, yeah, well, of course, a second, and good conversation on this. Is there any more deliberation on the motion? All right, with that said, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion passes 6-1 with Councilmember Walker voting in opposition. And thank you very much. I really appreciate the conversation on this topic. So, yes?
I just want to confirm, I understand where I heard the conversation tonight. Is that all right?
Yes.
So, number one, we are going to request that the error regarding our sewer, sewer, sanitary sewer boundary be fixed. Number two, we are continuing to keep our stance regarding Maltby and in opposition of any expansion. Number three, we are opposing Council Motion 22-099 for the expansion between Roosevelt and US 2. We are now supporting the Davis request for multiple reasons, including they are surrounded on three sides by the city, infrastructure is already in place, potential extension of trail across the property to the school district, mixture of housing types.
And an acknowledgement that it's, that the redevelopment is conditioned upon annexation.
Yes. And then I wanted to tell you next steps. You have a. Yes. And then I wanted to tell you next steps. You have a meeting on April 30. We can draft the letter for your signatures, which we can submit to the county's planning and community development committee at their May 7 meeting.
Yeah. So what what staff will do then is staff will go and put together a letter that reflects the decisions and the direction of the council. At, I don't want to leave Councilmember Walker out. So one option here is for us to document in the letter that this was approved by the council six one. And it's something that I can go ahead and sign on behalf of the city if that if that's good. And then we need to decide if I or if somebody else is willing to go down and speak to the council in Everett during the day to provide testimony in person. So we can cross that bridge next week.
Okay. So just confirmation, the letter will be signed for your signature with the council still approving it, correct?
It'll, yes. Yeah, just just document that it was approved on a six one.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you very much for the conversation.
Okay, cool. Really appreciate the conversation, everybody. Thank you. All right, we're gonna go and move on to the next item on the agenda. That would be the consent agenda. And I turn to the council. Or I'm gonna call on somebody. Councilmember Walker, your light's already red, so we don't need to play around with the microphone. Would you like to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, so so you you would like to? I understand you did make a motion to approve the consent.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Beaumont second. So we've got a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilmember Walker, second from Councilmember Beaumont. Any discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Councilmember Reports. We're gonna do popcorn tonight. We're gonna start off with Councilmember Beaumont in the center.
There we go. My mic seems to be working tonight. Goodness me. All right. So Thursday night, Councilmember Fulter and I attended the SEC dinner up at Terracotta Red in Everett and heard a really great budget presentation from a gentleman named Mike Bailey, I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with. It's always a great opportunity, and I'll let Councilmember Fulter elaborate a little further, but it's always a great opportunity to see our electeds throughout the county and catch up and make some really valuable connections with them. So always worthwhile to go to those. Also wanted to mention that tomorrow, I'm actually meeting with Zach Humphries and some members from the community and the Historical Society. We are going ahead, although we lost a grant to install some plaques on some of our historic buildings, we have received so many donations, including from Rotary and from Carolyn Eslick and a variety of other people, wonderful donations, to go ahead and get this project off the ground. So I'm really excited about that. And we're sitting down tomorrow at the museum to talk about what those plaques might look like and go ahead and try and generate some buzz downtown and and honor and recognize some history in Monroe. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up then is Councilmember Walker.
Just picking on me tonight. Gosh, I I do not have, oh, I I had lunch last week with Roger Evans, who's mentioned in the packet actually as a, oh, man, I don't recall his exact title, but Roger, I'm sure, is known by many, peer support. Thank you, Councilmember Fulter. Roger does a lot of great work for the the city, and I think he flies under the radar in just how productive he has been for kind of the the effort that we've had in addressing our homelessness crisis. And anyways, having coffee with him was just fascinating because it gave me an opportunity to hear what his day-to-day is is like. And we took a walk up and down Main Street and over by Rivers Edge. Something that was surprising to me was just how littered Main Street, Main Street can get. He was mentioning that they had just cleaned it up a few days before that. And there was already quite a bit of litter all over. So, that being Volunteer Week, I didn't know if any other council members would ever be interested in in joining me and going and picking up trash around town because it seems like there's always an opportunity there. But other than that, looking forward to the Arbor Day planting. Thank you for the proclamation about Administrative Appreciation Week. And, yeah, thank you for the discussion tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Walker. Councilmember Fulter?
I should have been ready. All right. Yes, last Thursday, I, before I attended the SEC dinner with Councilmember Beaumont, I went to a Community Transit Board workshop regarding the integration of the Swift Line with the Rapid Transit Rail Line. As you know, we've just opened up the Orange Line. I was there for the ribbon cutting a month ago or so. But the, they also talked about the Gold Line, which is a concept to bring the faster public transportation to the North County. Incidentally, just as we who speak in public, I would encourage everyone to look up the words focal fry and uptalk and perhaps realize why those are not good ways of talking when you're speaking in public. Just look into it. And also, along with my other council member, I did attend the SEC dinner and very good presentation on city budget and how to put it together. And I appreciate it. They then sent out the slideshow slideshow so we could take a look into it more. Anything else? I'm also going to be at the tree planting, so we will see you all there. And man, we are just hopping on. If you are not attending city events, it's because you are not trying.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher. Clap twice.
Hopefully I won't uptalk or say the other one that sounded like a bad word. What did I do this week? So.
Retired much?
My gosh, I tell you, I have to look at my calendar. So I talked with some residents and some business owners about cannabis in the city. That's become a bit of a subject. So I've reached out and talked to some people about that. I have Snohomish County tomorrow, meeting tomorrow. I will also be at the plea, the plea training or the tree planting, either one on Friday. And I think that's all I've got.
All right.
Thanks for suffering through that with me.
Councilmember Scarborough?
I have a whole lot to report. I'll be out of town between now and Monday afternoon evening. So I will be back Tuesday for the council.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hinford?
Thank you, Councilmember Davis.
Councilmember Gamble?
That was not deep enough to be Councilmember Davis. No, I attended the 25th Anniversary Celebration of the Miracle League this last Saturday. And what a great event, you know, that participated in the Miracle League for a long time, especially with the affiliation with the Little League and, you know, taking a lot of different teams up there through the years. But, you know, the chief was there, Becky was there. There was a lot of city representation. But that really is, you know, it's one of our crown jewels in the park system, you know, was the first one, all turf. But then just, you know, how it fits in with our, you know, the team, our our city mantra around, you know, where everybody can call, you know, Monroe home and everybody can belong. I mean, that is just epitomizes that. And it was just a great event. The Mariner Moose was there, Webly from the Aquasocks was there. They got into a fight. It was awesome. The kids loved it. It was all mock, right? But but it was, it was just great. Couldn't have ordered better weather, you know, across the board. They had the high school cheerleaders there and the the high school softball team was there. But yeah, just a ton of fun. I worked a couple of games along with my son and it just, if you've never done it, I highly, I highly recommend you you leave just with a huge smile on your face and just a lot of grateful kids that come from all over, very far down south, Renton and south, because we're one of the only Miracle League fields around that's dedicated or primary, I shouldn't say dedicated, but primary purpose is is that Miracle League. So anyway, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. We will now move to Staff and Department Reports. And we'll start off with the Police Department Report with Chief Jolly. Chief Jolly?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Council, we're going to talk about the new package, what they have to do, what they have to do with the service officers, with their training knowledge, and their, their team, and.
Councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
I've got to, I've got to get to the report, though. Sorry, hang on, chief. I was just looking at some of the numbers of the stuff that you guys have been going on. And if I can scroll down here. I just had a question on the department statistics where it says March. That's obviously just for the month of March. Are they actually going, are our incidents going up that much? Because I'm looking at year-to-date for 2022. It says year-to-date. Is that the whole year or is that just to March?
I was just.
Okay, so it doesn't, okay. Because I was looking at some of that and I started to multiply some things by months. And I was like, oh, my gosh. So that explains it to me. Thank you.
Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
Chief, we were talking about proactive policing and our police keeping their heads on a swivel and observing things around them. And that's a pretty awesome story in the report about the officer that had the DUI stop and noticed a vehicle prowling going on. Got a twofer, I guess, on.
Officer is a fine charge.
Amazing.
And just for the reason we just hired six of the officers now, who have graduated and are down there, that's celebration.
Love it. Amazing work. Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Jolly? All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda then is a presentation from the Finance Department with Director Hasser. Director Hasser?
So the finance report from March 2024 is being activated.
There you go. Probably could hear me anyway, but I am available for questions. But there was one thing that is not in the finance packet that I wanted to share tonight. Unlike my wonderful colleague in the Police Department, I'm actually losing staff in the Finance Department. I've had two retirements since the end of the year. And our Assistant Finance Director, Greg Pylund, is also leaving us to go to an unnamed city to the east of us. I don't want to say their name right now. I'm still a little upset. But his last day is going to be May 3. And we are going to be buying him a beer over at the Route Two Tap Room. So for those that might want to join and maybe just give him a hard time about leaving, you are welcome to do so. We'll probably start at about 4 o'clock. So, Friday, May 3.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Fulter, go ahead.
I do have two questions for you, Becky. On, well, I didn't even know how we, we do it on the page three, out of 333. So so there is a March 2024 receipts thing that has kind of, you know, little things that go up at the bottom. I just don't understand how to read this because we've got things like egg, forestry, fishing, hunting, and then there's this number 11, and then there's a gross amount and a net amount. I don't understand what the 11 is for. What are all those?
So the sales taxes are categorized by some national, see, NCAIS codes that determine what industry they're in. And that particular graph, and I'm trying to get to it as I'm speaking.
I know, it's way down there.
Page 14 of your report, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm almost there.
Okay.
What that graph is supposed to be showing you is how much is in each category. So if you're looking at number 11 and you scroll back up to the actual layout with the numbers, 11 is agriculture, forestry, fishing, and hunting. And then you'll see 11 there. And the amount that was collected that was remitted to the city in sales tax for the month was $75.41 sets.
So that I understand. I guess I just didn't understand those numbers, 11, 71, whatever. So you did help to explain that. So.
Yeah, the legend is up above. Yeah. So it's just that if I tried to put the actual category numbers there, it wouldn't fit on the page.
All right. I do have a secondary question. Under the the donations of 2024, I just want to know, what is holiday goo?
Holiday goo?
Holiday goo, correct.
Holiday goods?
I don't know. It's holiday goo. And I'm like, what?
Why are we celebrating holiday goo? I don't know. So which page is that? Is that's on the donations page or in the report itself?
Correct. It's on the donations page.
It was for the Ghostbusters holiday.
Yeah. I thought it was for the backpacks.
Yep, the goo.
It's for the, it was for the egg hunt.
The goo?
Mm-hmm.
I still don't know what goo is.
It's goo goods.
No, I think that was the brand name.
All right. That was just first time I'd seen the word goo in an official document. So I was like, hmm.
I have to use what what's in the system. So.
I will take that as my answers, although I do see that Director Roberts has his hand up behind you. I don't know. Perhaps he could shed some light.
Director Roberts, do you want to talk to us about goo?
I do.
Okay, you work with the septic system, I mean, the sewer system, right? Do you want to hear about this? Come on up.
There's a website with.
Holiday goo?
Yeah.
And we heard from the Parks Director, it is, it's the company name. It's the brand name.
Awesome. All right. Thank you for your answers. I appreciate it.
That was a gooed question. Thank you. All right. Yeah, thank you. All right. Anything else for Finance Department? Go ahead. Councilmember Beaumont?
I'm not going to ask about goo.
Thank you.
Director Hasser, just a quick question. And we may have already talked about this, but as I did read through your report, which was very comprehensive, I was taking a look at the awards, you know, Boys and Girls Club with all of our funding and who has spent 100%, you know, who is complete with some of these, some of this funding. And are we as a city recommending or reminding them that they have unspent funds?
Yes. Their contracts have it that they are supposed to obligate the funds by October, and they have till the end of actually 2026 then to spend. And that was ARPA guidelines. But we do periodically contact them and see where they're at and remind them that they do have these funds.
All right. Any other questions for Director Hasser? All right. Thank you very much. I was gonna say Councilmember Knight, Administrator Knight, Economic Development, March, April 2024 reports.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things have been going on with economic development over the last month. The Economic Development Advisory Board has been reviewing the draft economic development element of the comprehensive plan. So they've been taking a look at the existing conditions. They're currently working on SWOT, so strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis. And then they'll be moving into looking at the goals and policies with the intent then forwarding a recommendation onto the Planning Commission that will eventually work its way to council. We also had a meeting with some early organizers of downtown business owners looking to form up kind of a more regular meeting that was organized by Patrick Doherty, our Economic Development Coordinator, along with Zach Humphries. So the initial meeting was held, and then the intent is to pull in then additional business and property owners over the coming months. We're also going to be working as a board, looking at the city's permit process. So we have that scheduled starting in May, in the month of May. So we'll be looking in May and June and again, looking forward to potentially bringing some recommendations forward to council from that initiative. So those are the things that have been happening with the Economic Development Advisory Board. The last thing I would mention is that they did work at reviewing some proposed changes to uses within the promenade zone, which is on Main Street, promenade zone. And so those are getting forwarded to, again, the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission is reviewing those recommendations with an intent, I think, of forwarding forwarding something on to the City Council. So that's it for the economic development report, unless there are questions.
Questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
Sorry, my agenda wasn't in front of me, but this is, this is your extended agenda right now?
No.
Okay. This is the economic development update. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I'm covering for Zach Humphries, who really gives the report.
I was panicking. Trying to find the agenda so I could see which part. Thank you.
Any other, um, questions about the economic report? All right. And we had to move on to the next item. That's community development report with Director Bailey. Director Bailey?
Uh, thank you very much. Fresh off the press, to tie into what Deborah was just saying, the planning commission actually considered, uh, code amendments for the downtown promenade last night and will be setting a public hearing to, uh, consider the proposed amendments and then those will come to city council. That's as fresh as the report gets. I'm going to the monthly report. Our project highlight is the Sky Valley Food Bank addition. Um, this was a, a project that started, um, permit wise back in 2022. It has recently been completed. A CFO has, has been issued. They unfortunately had some issues with contractors and, and some other things that, that, um, had occurred, but ultimately they were able to do a, an expansion that was around 1,100 square feet to the existing facility. And if you haven't gone by to see it, um, it, um, I think they did a good job and it's going to help that operation with, with some additional space. Moving on to our, I did want to, a comment that we're, uh, in some discussions with, with Administrator Knight. We are going to update some of the graphics that we've been providing in the monthly report. So, um, stay tuned for some additional graphics that will show all of the permits that, that we're both issuing and submitting. So I think it'll give a, a better, a better picture of, of the full scope of what community development is, is currently working on some. Also, I want to, very happy to announce that we have, um, hired a, a new permit tech who has, has, uh, started and has been working for us and is going very well. Uh, she came from, she came, Katie Simpson comes to us from, she previously had worked for a software vendor who did permit tracking for municipalities. So she has a really unique insight into processes that cities are using. And she's been already a very, a very valuable addition, um, for us to understand our processes, how we can do this electronically and how we can, it can communicate. And, and, and we also, um, have recently chosen our, uh, vendor, at least our, our top choice for vendor for permit tracking software. So we'll be moving forward on, on that as well. And also I want to, to, um, say that our building division recently was awarded the Wavo, which stands for Washington Association of Building Officials, their jurisdictional outreach award for 2023. And I know that the mayor and our, um, building officials, Stacy Criswell, were in Leavenworth, I believe, last week to, to receive, um, to receive that award. And it, it is a, it is a really, the achievement, I believe, is going to provide a lot of benefits, not only for the city of Monroe, but for this whole region. And just a little bit of a description, it's, it's a, a group that was initiated and led by our building official, but with, um, participation from everyone in our building division, from the, from our building, building inspector to plans examiner. So it's really been a group effort, but it is, it is a group that includes, currently includes building officials from Goldbar, Sultan, Duval, Monroe, Snohomish, Lake Stevens, Stanwood, and hopefully soon Snohomish County. This group gets together every month and they talk about issues that relate to, um, the building profession, which can be from codes to customer service, to experiences with, um, with developers. And, and it's, uh, it's good, it's a project that's going to continue and, and expand. And we've already seen a lot of benefits, particularly discussions about the wooi code, which, um, I know that I'm not going to go into detail, but that kind of initiated that wherever, every city was trying to get a consistent response and make sure that everybody is communicating together. So, um, hats off to, to the building, um, division for, for that. And I'm sure you'll be hearing more about that award. And I did want to, before I end, uh, just let folks know, for those who, um, read the report in detail, uh, you may have noticed, uh, it, at the very end in our comprehensive plan section, we had, there's, we have the guiding principles, uh, which we had talked about at council and, and just to let you know, the ones that's in, that is in the report are not the most updated ones, in case you read them and you're like, those changes didn't get evolved. They'll be in the, in the next monthly report. So that I will conclude unless you have questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Bailey? All right. Seeing that, we're going to go ahead and move on to the city administrative report, extended agenda. Administrator Knight.
Yeah, thank you. I needed Cheryl to change the slide because I didn't have it up on my laptop either. So the upcoming items, uh, for next week, we will have a special meeting to talk about, um, the strategic plan and strategic priorities. So looking for council input and feedback as we begin to put together the 2025, 2026 biennial budget. The meeting following that then will be on May 7th and we will have a public safety committee meeting. We have a couple of items for that agenda and that includes the 2023 reports for bias based policing pursuits, oops, use of force, annual report and the municipal court quarterly report from Judge Ness. For the regular, uh, study session, then we will have a legislative, um, oh no, we will not be having a legislative recap. My apologies. We have not managed to get that scheduled, so that won't be happening. But we will be having an update, uh, for the police station architectural study and preliminary design. And then, uh, the Monroe 2024 draft land use chapter with Kate Turtleow and, uh, community development director Lance Bailey.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Walker, go ahead, and then Councilmember Hanford, and then Councilmember Foulsher.
I don't know if the workshop would be the appropriate time for it, or maybe the next meeting. I know that myself and, uh, Councilmember Beaumont and Hanford were super impressed by the, um, lobbyists that we met with and interviewed in DC. Is that coming back to us at some point for review? Okay. Awesome.
That has been, uh, we've been negotiating a contract. That has been the reason for the delay.
That's great to hear.
Yes.
Yeah. We were, I don't know if, if we briefed the rest of the council, but we were super impressed by the presentation they gave. So, yeah, really looking forward to, to hearing how that goes. So thank you.
Your buck.
Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, there is a good chance that I will be out of town on the 7th of May.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Foulsher, go ahead.
I will also be out of town on the 7th of May and so will Councilmember Fisher, which means two thirds of our public safety committee is going to be gone.
Okay. If you're not going to be here on May 7th, please raise your hand. All right. The May 7th council meeting, I'm going to need a motion to cancel, cancel the council meeting. What do you think, Zach, who's our counselor? Okay. Go ahead. Councilmember Gamble?
I'll make a motion to cancel the May 7th meeting because of the slackers that won't be here.
Slacker second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Gamble, a second from Councilmember Foulsher to cancel the May 7th council meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Councilmember Foulsher. The cancel and the council's really.
I know, it's a lot of fun, but I just want to make a statement. I am not a slacker. I'll be in DC that night and so will Councilmember Fisher.
You know, we have virtual option. Right? I use it.
Any, any other discussion? Going to go ahead and move to vote on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right. So we will adjust the extended agenda accordingly. So with that, I, I think I got all the flags. Were there any other flags up for the extended agenda? All right. Thank you. Ready to go ahead and move on to the administrators' report. Councilmember, Councilmember Deborah.
All right. Thank you. Just a reminder on the two upcoming meetings, we have the, uh, study session next week, the special meeting, April 30th, and then May 16th is the port boundary expansion open house. If you didn't get a chance to check your email, um, Councilmember Beaumont had asked at the last meeting what the format for that meeting would be, and it's going to be, the port said, a regular open house. So there will be tables there and, and staff members to talk to, but there won't be a specific presentation happening. And then also a shout out for the Miracle League for the 25th anniversary. Uh, there were any number of staff members who attended that. So park staff were prepping the Miracle Field. It really did look amazing. They spent a significant amount of time kind of pulling that all together. Uh, and we're somewhat short-staffed in parks right now, so it really did take a, a full team effort for that. And then also, um, uh, police department staff were there, Rotary, Kiwanis, YMCA volunteers, um, and then city staff members as well. So it really was a beautiful afternoon or, and a, and a great day to, to have the 25th anniversary. Good turnout for that. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Uh, any questions on the administrators' report? All right. Can you go ahead and move on to the mayor's report? Uh, just a couple of items. One, um, thank you, Councilmember Gamble, for speaking at the, um, Miracle League. I was, uh, gone over the weekend and, uh, so thank you very much for doing that. I also attended the outreach award, um, the Wavo, uh, that Director Bailey had mentioned up in Leavenworth. It was great seeing our staff get recognized for something that, um, that our building official had worked with other building officials in the area to do outreach, uh, related to building permits and, uh, building related information. So, um, anyway, just, again, we, we have great staff and I just want folks to understand that what you see here is just a, a very, very small sliver of the work that they do. And it was great seeing our building official and our building team get recognized for their work. I did attend the graduation today. Uh, one of the things I do in my day job is I frequently go to the, um, CJTC, the Criminal Justice Training Center, uh, for graduations, uh, for the, uh, agency that I work for. But I was, uh, down there today also for, uh, for the graduation of a new officer. So I remain really impressed with our ability to recruit folks. I think right now we, we only have two openings. Is that correct? Two? Yep. And, um, anyway, great, great job with the recruiting and, uh, thank you all for your support of our law enforcement folks. I think that really helps out with recruiting people here in Monroe. It's already been mentioned by folks, just like the other two items, that, uh, there will be an Arbor Day planting this coming Friday. We will be puppy sitting, one of our grand puppies. So one of the first grand puppies of Monroe will be, uh, with me on Friday. It will be Sprig, uh, the Tibetan terrier. So, um, we'll see if Sprig wants to help dig in the hole, uh, or herd the, herd the kids, one of the two. Uh, so if you're, I, I assume that we're going to do a, um, notice of potential quorum for folks, just in case. We do have four council members present. And then I would, uh, Councilmember, uh, Jake, Councilmember Walker, uh, if you are, if you do find that you have, uh, more than three volunteers from the council, uh, we might need to, uh, do just a notice of potential quorum. So if you, if you do find that there's interest from other council members and you think you've got four, uh, if you just let, uh, staff know, oh, do whatever, whatever it is we might need to do with that. So, or they'll say, don't worry about it. Just don't talk business. And then, uh, lastly, uh, last week on, uh, Friday, I, um, again, Strategies 360, we're not at all extending their contracts. I don't want anybody to think that that's what's going on, but, uh, the, uh, the person who has, uh, entered into the role that Crystal used to be in, uh, came and actually visited Monroe on Friday. Um, I drove her around town. She wanted to see, uh, what sort of things we've received, uh, funding for in the past and what sort of things we could get funding for. It's her intent to make certain that there's a nice warm handoff to the next company. And so since that contract goes to the, what, beginning of June or end of June, uh, she just wanted to make certain that, uh, that her company is still providing services as we are, uh, leaving Strategies 360 and going to another company. So, um, uh, for your interest, uh, the person's name is Stephanie Wright. Uh, some of you may know her. She was a former Snohomish County Council member, um, and, um, is, uh, she's doing legislative work in Hawaii, uh, Washington, and then DC. Those of you who are going to the Economic Alliance, uh, will see her because she'll be on that and she offered that while she was there to go ahead and be a resource for you. Again, uh, she understands that we're going on with another firm, so this is just doing a, you know, doing their duty and not just, uh, phoning it in, so to speak. All right. I think that that's all that I have to add. Yes? No, they didn't. So we could use a motion to cancel the committee meeting for public safety. So Councilmember Foulsher?
I move that we, uh, cancel the public safety committee meeting for May 7th.
I have a motion from Councilmember Foulsher, a second from Councilmember Beaumont, cancel the council committee meeting for public safety on May 7th. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All right. There being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. All right. Breathe. Okay. We do have a need for an executive session. Uh, we do have two executive sessions, uh, that are identified at least by RCW. One is potential litigation person RCW 42.30.110 subsection one, subsection little I. And the one, other one is sale and property pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, point, I'm subsection one, subsection little C. We're going to do an additional, uh, an initial 10 minutes beginning at 8:26 PM and, uh, we'll announce extensions as needed. We will reconvene, uh, before potentially adjourning. There may be action to follow. So we are now in executive session for an additional.
Executive meeting, additional four minutes. Executive session has extended five minutes. Session extended two minutes. Executive session has extended three minutes.
Okay. We're back out of executive session. The time right now is 8:52 PM. Uh, there's no further business this evening, so unless there's objection, we will be adjourned. Saying no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you. Have a great week, everybody.